We have our minutes from a couple of our prior meetings. You should have in your packets there, our regular scheduled meeting on July the 11th, 2018, excuse me, I said July, January, well, where did I put July? January the 11th, 2018, that meeting started at 6:30. And you should have that in your packet. Does anyone see any items of corrections or concerns on the minutes? During that, I'll move and sign those into the record. For our minute break. Okay, then we had a special call meeting on January the 23rd. Also, we had that meeting at 2:00 PM, a special call meeting, where we had a couple of resolution items and just basically two housekeeping items that had to get done before the end of January to meet some deadlines. The first one was on the election. We had to set the qualifying fees for the solicitor position in the school board, and also we renewed the memorandum of understanding with the University of Georgia system for the cooperative extension office that's been in Walker County for many years. We extended that memorandum of understanding through December 31st of 2020. Any comments or questions on those minutes? During that, I'll sign those into the record. Okay, on our agenda here tonight, we were supposed to have a public hearing on the rezoning of a piece of property up on Lookout Mountain. We're gonna have to table both the hearing and also the new business for that. We discovered today, once we were going through our check process, that the dates for this had been set. We ended up having to cancel that meeting back in January, I believe it was January the 25th. Due to scheduling conflict, we had to cancel that meeting, so all of the notifications that went to the property owners, the posters that we put out at the property, and also the notice that went into the paper said that that special, or that public hearing was supposed to be on the January the 25th. We didn't have that meeting, so now we've gotta go back through that process to get our procedures done. And so we will repost that, resend the letters to the property owners that surround that property, also re-advertise that in the paper, and get that back on our agenda in the coming weeks. So, we will have to table all that at this time. Is there anyone here that was for, are here for that tonight? I don't think there's anybody here that was actually even here for that, but just to keep us out of trouble, we're going to table that and get that timeline correct, so we don't have any issues there going forward. Okay, the next item that we have on item number two, under new business, is the Walker County Transit Modification of the Drug Awareness Policies. I think what you have in your packet is just an abbreviated version of that, because the actual full package under the drug program, Drug Awareness Program, is, looks like over around 30 pages or so. So, we have a alcohol drug program for our transit drivers now, that is required by state and federal guidelines to meet our requirements for our grant funding. And so this is just some updates that was sent to us through the state to update this policy for our employees. So there's a couple places on here for me to sign this. The full version of this will be online on our website, or if you needed a copy of this, we could print you one out in the full version, but there's probably more here than you would want to have to sit here and read through at this time. So are there any questions or comments on that? During that, I'll sign this policy for the transit into effect here today, February the 8th, 2018. Again, we'll post this on our website. There's a couple of amendments here. Is this the part we got into the packet? Yeah, so you've got the part that says Drug and Alcohol Policy Addendum, effective February 8th, 2018. That gives you a summary of what changed. So if you've got those three pages there, it basically incorporated those changes into the master policy that already existed. Some of the changes you'll see deals with the oxycodone and some of those type pain medications as well, that wasn't in the other policy. So there's another place for me to sign on this, for acknowledging the changes. State's good at getting us lots of paperwork. Item number three on our agenda is the approval of purchase order 2017-000384 for the Walker County Transit System Local Match. We did include a memo in there, and I'll read this. Purchase order number 2017-000384. The Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, received approval in early FY17 to use $328,119 in federal funds in FY18 to assist with the day-to-day operations of the Walker County Transit System. The amount included $245,532.16 in federal and state funds to assist with the purchase of six new shuttle vans. The purchase of these vehicles is done by the GDOT for the Rural Transit Program under a statewide contract with their bus vendors. GDOT's policy requires payment of a local share in advance of issuing the vendor contract. Walker County's local match for the six vehicles is 10% or $27,281.36. The remaining 90%, $272,813.52 contract is covered by the federal at 80% and the state by 10%. So in your packet, you will have an invoice that is from Georgia Department of Transportation, and that invoice is dated, if you'll notice, June 14th of 2017, but right under that, it refers to that it is for fiscal year 18. The state of Georgia runs their fiscal year on a January fir-, excuse me, July first, thank you, July 1st through June 30th of each year. So they actually are projecting out and doing their budgets and handling their invoicing, so I just actually received this invoice just a few days ago, but for their accounting system and their budgeting, and they do refer to that as FY18, which actually didn't start for them until July 1 of 2017. So, the previous administration had committed to these buses because they worked about two years in advance on ordering and working with their vendors. So, we wanted to honor that commitment, plus we did not want to walk away from over $200,000 in funding from the state and federal government to get these six new buses. So our share, again, of that cost of that bus is $27,281.36. You do show a corresponding purchase order that shows for capital purchase of the vehicles, so that works out to $4,546.89 per bus. And so, this is a change that we made back in October, that we told you all that any purchases over $15,000, we would bring before the public to let the public know how we're spending the money, what it's being used for. And so this purchase order is over that $15,000 mark, so we wanted to bring this before the public, to be more transparent, to show our citizens what we're doing, and also to show that we're getting a great value by working with the state and the federal government for them to be able to provide the funding of 90% of the money to buy these buses. We're gonna start reporting how many transit riders that we have each and every month. And so this is a system of buses that's very, very vital and very important to many citizens in our county, that provides them transportation, many to and from work, many to doctor's appointments. It allows them to have transportation, you know, to go to shopping, to buy their groceries and essential items and things. And so we have a lot of riders, and this is a great program that is, has a lot of grant funding, that would be very hard for us to do this program without the assistance of the state and federal government. So, is there any questions or comments on this purchase?
Question, are we replacing buses or are we adding buses?
Replacement.
You're gonna replace six of the older buses?
Yes, that's correct.
How many buses do we have now?
We have a total of 12, and what we're gonna be doing-
But part of them are not operational, I understand.
Well, we run 10 pretty much every day, and then we have two backups, because we take appointments every day, and so they know through the program, you're gonna have to pull buses out for service, you could have a breakdown. So we pretty much are staffed and run 10 buses every day, gives us the two backups. So this will take the six oldest buses with the highest miles on them. Going forward, what I've left to do, since we have 12, going forward, we're gonna start replacing probably four a year, and that way we'll be on a cycle where the oldest bus in the fleet will be three years old. The state really wants us to be in compliance, where we keep buses under 250,000 miles. They see from best practice across the state, they have this transit program in 129 other counties, we make 130. So there's 130 counties total that have this program, and they find that a lot of the wear and tear and maintenance issues really start to surface after that 250,000-mile mark. Also, if we are working on repairs, we have to pay 50% of the repair costs. And so, if we spend thousands of dollars in repair versus paying 10% on a purchase, so if we had one engine, one transmission or something go out on a vehicle, we could be looking at half the cost of what our 10% match would be to have a new one. So, it does drive a lot of value and makes sense to turn those on an ongoing basis. And also too, many times we're hauling people with disabilities-
Wheelchairs, I think.
-wheelchairs, also people that are elderly, and so we can't afford to have a bus sitting on the side of the road that's broke down or won't start, and we have some of our most vulnerable citizens sitting on the side of the road in either extreme hot or extreme cold conditions. And so this is a great program, because many of the grants that we see, you have to match 30% with the state. And so having a grant program that is a 90% match from the state, where the state and the feds put in 90%, is great for us to have. Good, good questions. Anything else on this? All right, I'll go ahead and sign this purchase order, and we'll move forward with this. And the state does a good job of working directly with the vendors and buying in volume and bidding that out, and so they handle all the, all the behind-the-scenes work, make it easy for us. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the statistical report that we put out every month of our department's statistics. We've added a few things here to give a better understanding, and we're also showing now the historical data for yearly totals for 2016, for the data that we had, and then the total numbers of actual, that we were accumulating over 2017. I'll call your attention to a couple of the new things here that we have added. If you look down, let's just say, let's start from the bottom up. We were talking about the transit, where it says total trips. In December, we actually had 1,644 trips. In January, we had 1,501 trips. January's down a little bit, because we had some bad weather, we had a couple of days we were not able to run the transit, so we shut down on a couple of different occasions, and also sometimes too, when weather gets bad, some riders will cancel those appointments. And so we're gonna start tracking that. But when you look at the historical data from 2017, we were just shy of 25,000 trips. And so a trip is based off of one way. So if you pick up a resident at their house, take them to the doctor's office, that's one trip, you go back and pick them up and take them home, that's two trips. And so the patrons or riders, their share of cost of that is $4 per trip. And so we'll take them anywhere pretty much they need to go, and pick them up, and it works out well. Public Works, we've had a lot of inquiries and people saying, "When are you gonna fix potholes or patch places in the road?" So we've asked our road department to, Public Works, to start tracking that. We didn't have any data in December, but in January, they patched 180 potholes throughout the county, and there's probably that many more, and then some. So we're gonna start tracking and monitoring that and keeping up with that. Also there, the third item up, the newsletter subscribers have been added, so we added 21 in December, 37 in January, and so in 2017, we had 1,184 subscribers. What that is, for those of you that may not be on that, Joe Leggie does a real nice job every month of putting an e-newsletter together, and we get that out, and it's kind of a recap of everything that went on in county government that month. And so we continue to add to that database and get a lot of good response of giving that recap. You'll see there that the, our website visits are still very strong. We also launched a new website. I think our numbers were probably off a little bit due to, we actually changed our domain name, and we actually had a couple of days there of transitioning, plus through the holidays, so we're still strong there. And, single-family home construction, we finished strong for 2017. You see it, 135, and then we had 13 new single-family home construction permits in January. So, other than, everything else is pretty much the same, but we used to, we would not get all of this finalized until the last meeting of the month. So we have got our departments more streamlined and engaged and excited, and so we are now able to get this report out the first meeting of our monthly cycle, so we get that data to you much quicker. Okay, that will actually adjourn our regular scheduled meeting, and at this time, we'll open up the floor to any discussion, questions, or comments. Does anybody have anything? Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to thank you again for the meeting, the dogs and the animals. I think it was very good that so many people in our community came out and shared their concerns, ideas, and little did I know how awful it was, actually, to hear so many awful stories that are out there. On my way to the meeting, on Highway 341, there's a dog just standing right in the middle of the road. I mean, this is what I see a lot, but I don't know how prevalent it is out there, and how dangerous the situation is for everybody. And I would also like to commend Stephanie for the job that she's been doing, because I know she's been jumping through hoops to get those dogs and cats to rescues in different areas that they have owned. Because I really, I care about the animals, and there were a lot of people at that meeting that were animal advocates, that too care about our animals. And it's unfortunate that so many people are irresponsible, and that's what it comes down to, that we have to step in and say, "Well, if you can't be responsible, the government is gonna have to do something." That's how I look at it, anyway.
Well, thank you. What was you referring to? At the end of last month, over here at our Walker County LaFett Library, we had a public hearing, public forum, where we talked about animal control issues in our county, and we're in the midst of doing a rewrite on our ordinances for animal control, and I think we had somewhere around 85 or 90 people that came out and attended that. It was pretty much standing room only there toward the end, so very, very good to see the active engagement and involvement, and had a lot of people that had a chance to speak, and we logged all that information, and so we're gonna be working on that to get that in a draft form, where we can put that out, put it on our website, make that available, and give people time to review that, and also have another meeting to go back and get additional comments or input of once we get that draft. So it's gonna be a little bit of a process, but we have got that ball rolling, and we have a lot of support and a lot of excitement to work on this, this project.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I had a problem with an animal. Me and my wife live a mile and a half away from Soca in the county, and I couldn't find Animal Control's phone number, so this was pertaining to a fox, okay, which I perceived could have had rabies. Well, so I called 911, and they told me I should've called Animal Control, and I said, "Well, I don't have Animal Control's number, and I was hoping that you could send a sheriff's deputy agir to keep an eye on this animal until Animal Control got there." So, a little while later, the sheriff's department shows up, and I spoke with him about the animal shelter, and he didn't make me feel real good about calling, because he didn't really seem that it was much of a threat and much of a concern, you know, which I don't blame him whatsoever, I have all the respect in the world for the sheriff's department. He was just unknowledgeable of it. I have a little bit of knowledge in that field. So, I told him, I said, "Well, if you want to leave and have other calls, you know, feel free to go ahead and leave, because me and my adult son could keep an eye on the fox until the Animal Control got there." But when Animal Control did get there, real nice young man, but I noticed on the side of his truck, it said Walker County Police Department. I never knew that a county had a police department, and he told me it was one of the very few counties that do have one. Usually county's sheriff's department, and city is a police department, but it was Animal Control. And I helped him get the fox into his truck. I told him, "If they do deem it necessary to check that animal for rabies, I would like to know if it came back positive." I never heard from him, and so I can, I figured that it wasn't. And there's a few furrow cats in our neighborhood, and a few, sometimes when a female dog comes in heat, there'll be some strange male dogs show up in our neighborhood. I seen one just the other day that was tearing my neighbor's garbage off pieces and everything. Who is the Animal Control for Walker County? Because if you look at Walker County, when I punch in on, when I Google Walker County Animal Control, it shows the animal shelter, and then it says a few paragraphs about the animal shelter, and then it says, "If you have a problem with Animal Control, see their page." I can't find their page. And I tried looking up the Walker County Police Animal Control, couldn't find it on that internet anywhere. So what kind of animal control does Walker County have now?
Well, we are one of the few counties in the state that still has a county police department. And the county police department handles primarily code enforcement and animal control. And so, you should be able to call 911 or call their non-emergency number to dispatch when there's an animal concerned. It works in conjunction with the animal shelter. So a lot of times, people will call the animal shelter, and then they'll notify someone that's an animal control officer to go out and, you know, get involved in a case.
Well, on their website, it says, "If you have animal control needs," to look at their page, but I couldn't find it. But that officer was just unaware of how serious a case of rabies can be, and I-
He needs to have the shot, Chief, no.
Sir?
He needs to have the shot, Chief, no.
Well, no, but the way that I explained it to that officer, because I was in Animal Control for a while, and I specialized in rabies, is that at least he should let his and other officers know, "Hey, there could be a case of rabies after, by Lickman and Soca, so if you get out your car at night and you see it's some kind of animal, you know, you may wanna be aware if that animal did come back positive showing rabies." Or sometimes, I was actually on my way to pick my grandson up off the school bus, about 2:30 in the afternoon, and this fox was in my driveway.
Is that, uh-
I'm very familiar with what rabies looks like.
I know it's kinda close there, but is, were you actually in Catoosa County or Walker?
No, Walker, I'm in Walker, I'm wearing between Lakeview Drive and South Ridge. Wearing that little area there. Very close to Lane Funeral, right by the county line. But to me, and not just to me, but other government departments consider that very serious, and it is a, I tried to explain it to the officer, "To me, it's a public safety issue." And he refrained, told me that the public safety issue would be if he had to discharge his gun and shoot the animal. Well, I didn't want him just get out of his car and start shooting the animal, and I told him that I was more than capable of taking care of it, but I knew what to do in the in-cage. This animal had what I presumed to be what they call dumb rabies. The animal just stood there, it would not move whatsoever, right in the middle of my driveway. I even moved my car, and it would not move. There's two different kinds of rabies. There's dumb rabies, like this animal was displaying. They don't fumble to mouth like most people think they do, neither they drool. And this lube is where they transmit the virus from one animal to another. But I also explained to that officer, there's a type of rabies called furious rabies. There's two different types, dumb and furious. If an animal has furious rabies, it will attack anything. It will attack an animal five times its size. It will attack a telephone pole. I don't care what it is, because they hallucinate. And I figured, by observing this animal, that this animal was in the process of hallucinating. It was, it would take its hand and just move, and it would just look at it. And I didn't figure it was blind, because even a blind animal, if it feels threatened, it's gonna take off running somewhere. This animal would not do nothing but stand there. So when the Animal Control Officer got there, I helped, he actually, I could tell that this man, like I said, is a very nice young man, but I could tell he never had any training whatsoever when it comes to dealing with an animal that possibly had rabies. He asked me what, because I told him some experience I had, and he asked me what I would do to get the animal, and I told him, and I helped him get the animal injured. He gave me his card, so now I know who to call. But since I did not hear back, I don't even know if they tested that animal for rabies. And there's two people who definitely want to know if there's rabies in your county. One is the DNR, Department of Natural Resources, okay? The other one is the Health Department. Rabies control is actually supposed to be done through your local health department. That's your authority that actually comes under. So I was just curious about what, we've lived in Walker County for six years now, but I really, I took an animal down to the Walker County Animal Shelter before and everything. But as far as having an actual animal control, I'm just curious about what kind of actual animal control we have in the county now.
Well, we do have full-time animal control officers. We do pick up- A lot of animals, and if you look on this report, many of these animals, we show adopted rescue to return, you know, we're averaging probably 100 a month. Some of them are surrendered, but a lot of them are picked up by Animal Control. And so there, there's a lot of activity, and our shelter stays full. We stay overrun all the time, and we do, do a lot to try to get them adopted out. So, but if you, after the meeting, if you'll get there with David and let him get a little more information from you-
I actually have something I'd like to give you.
Okay, so David is the director over that department, gentleman sitting there in the black shirt, so if y'all could talk after the meeting, and then maybe y'all can get, see where we need to go with that. Thank you for coming. Okay, anyone else? All right, well, that will conclude our meeting tonight. Appreciate each one of y'all being here, and hope all of y'all have safe travel homes, and look forward to seeing you back here at our next meeting. Thank you for coming.